Good evening. It is August 24, 2020 at six o'clock, and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City council meeting. Order unless there's objection. If there is none, the meeting is called for order. College, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Yes.
Please rise. At these meetings, help us take decisions which take us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor has made a motion to amend the agenda.
Please.
I'd like to move the proclamation from Wendy to the top and do that next.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of the decision to use the proclamation. If you clap, I say aye.
Aye.
We're all here tonight. You opposed? All right. So I'm so incredibly honored to be able to recognize one of Dunwoody's founding parents. Our founding, oh, thank you, our founding mother. Thank you. So to speak. And she thinks she's retiring, and so we're going to let her think that. But I'm certain she will, she will let us utilize her talents as needed in the future. That is okay, I'm going to read from here so everyone can hear, and then I'll come down and present it. Thank you. Whereas, whereas Beverly Jean Wingate, Bev, is a determined, rational, intellectual, energized woman with a clever wit and a quick sense of humor who is faithfully dedicated to her family, country, and city. And whereas, growing up on a farm in Champaign, Illinois, Bev learned the definition of perseverance and hard work. She was active in the 4-H Club and Future Homemakers of America. She was taught to be involved with the local community. She ran track, was the feature editor for the school's newspaper, served on student council, and was a regular on the campus radio station W-Kid. And whereas on August 1952, just before her 18th birthday, she was hired by Illinois Bell Telephone to be an operator in their call center in the Champaign area. Bev retired in the fall of 1961 after six promotions and almost 10 years of service to marry Walter R. Anderson in 1971. Son, and began a family. Son Walter was born in May 1966. She was divorced in 1971 and married Ron Wendy Wingate in November 1972. She was married to Wendy for 46 years until his passing in November 2018. She is a fantastic gamma to son Walter's only child, Courtney, and mother-in-law to Cheryl. And whereas in July of 1960, Bev was one of four women to supervise the call center for the Republican National Convention in Chicago. Bev honed her political skills here as the center was just off the convention floor for use by the delegates, press, and the public. And whereas Dunwoody appreciates Bev for her 40-plus years of support, service, and leadership to Dunwoody Newcomers Club, Dunwoody Women's Club, Dunwoody Preservation Trust, Squirrel Center Guild, Sage Door Players, Dunwoody Nature Center, Dunwoody Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and 911 memorial events, Fourth of July Parade, 2007 Grand Marshall, with her husband Wendy, DeKalb County Domestic Violence Task Force, DeKalb County Veterans Advisory Board, and Dunwoody United Methodist Church. And whereas, outside of the political and volunteer areas, Bev's hobbies are cooking, macrame, oil painting, learning to play musical instruments, including the ukulele, organ, and recently learning how to play the piano, reading crossword puzzles, and lovers of animals, particularly German shepherds, and is now a gamma to a Great Dane. Bev was a licensed small plane pilot in the 70s and 80s and at one time held a real estate license. She currently drives around Dunwoody in style, is the coolest gamma ever in her black 1997 Trans Am with a tee top. And whereas Bev was an integral member of the founding committee for the incorporation of the city of Dunwoody, where her insight, professional experience, and historical knowledge of Dunwoody contributed to the efforts of the committee. Bev helped guide the resolution for the incorporation of the city of Dunwoody in 2008 and continued her service on various city committees. Bev calls herself a firefighter. She puts out fire for wealth of knowledge before misinformation burns out of control. And now therefore I, Lynn Deutsch, Mayor of Dunwoody, Georgia, do hereby proclaim September 9, 2020, which is Bev's birthday, as Bev Wingate Bay in the city of Dunwoody in honor of her service, dedication, and commitment to the citizens of Dunwoody community, the unofficial mother of Dunwoody. And so if you will all join me in honoring. Yes.
If your family can come up too. Do you want everybody to come up? Do you want your family to come up this far? Uh, if they would, is that what?
Bev, do you want to say anything? Uh, maybe after we do this, ma'am? Yes, I would love to. You know, yeah. That's my limits, is my limit. That's. That would not give you any limit tonight. So this is just a tiny token of the appreciation for the work you've done in our community. And there's not a nonprofit organization in the city, but even from long before we were a city, that has not benefited from your presence here. And then, of course, we would not be the city we are without you. And let out determination on the adjectives, and I would say that you were probably the most determined to make this happen, and so we are doubly grateful. And so with this, this is for you. Thank you. Did we give a photo?
Yes. Can y'all scoot back a little bit so we can get you all on Zoom?
For this momentous occasion, can they all come down?
Absolutely, absolutely. And if you'll scoot back a little bit so we can get you on the Zoom camera, that'd be great.
I just do scoot back.
Scoot back a little bit, and if y'all would scoot, scoot down a little bit.
Okay.
Do y'all want to come around? Is that what, I think the mayor's suggesting?
If you can come down, it would be probably better.
I think there would be two guys that come down.
Leadership dinner. It's bad, actually. And I don't hear what people say, so I don't know.
Just make sure that everybody can see me here. Right, ready? One, two, three. And again, and again, and again.
So also, just as a small token, I have this for you so that when you're bored and you need to come back and find something to do, just letting it. Thank you. And I thought I was going to retire and slip quietly away. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Lloyd. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, one and all. Thank you so much for honoring me tonight. It is most humbling. I think I would just take one moment to suggest to Chief Mike Gorlin that if he needs any help in the future investigating some difficult cases, he could very well hire from within, because after hearing all the details that are in that proclamation, I know there are some councillors that have some super duper skills investigating policies. You know who you are. I think I know who you are now too. But thank you. To begin my appreciation, my gratitude, I have to start with the community leaders who came before me. There were so many of them. They invited me to join them. They taught me well. I would like to name all of them, but there are far too many, so I'm going just to mention two that were very special ladies. And those were the two grand ladies of Dunwoody, the late Mary Squirrel and the late Joyce Sumacher. Those two dear ladies were already whipping the Dunwoody community into shape when I arrived in 1980. And it was an honor, it was a joy to join them, and I can tell you, it was also a lot of fun. I'd also like to thank all of the other volunteers that worked alongside me over these last 40 years. They were my inspiration. They guided, they encouraged me, and most importantly, some of them became my friends. Also, last but not least, I want to thank my family. My son Walter, granddaughter partner here tonight. Cheryl, my daughter-in-law, could not make it on view. I've already told, we had a little incident with the Great Dane puppy, the puppy who happens to be 55 or 60 pounds by now. And Cheryl volunteered to stay home and be with the puppy while we all came. So I'm thanking her for that. And I especially want to thank my, my dear, dear late husband Wendy. As most of you know, he loved this community just as much as I do. They never minded. Well, they never complained about the late, late dinners or the many carryout meals when I was doing my thing. In fact, it was their love and encouragement, and oftentimes their helping hands that helped me to succeed in whatever it was we needed to do. Whatever I may have done for the community of Dunwoody, I have received that tenfold. My life has been enriched in ways I could never even imagine when we moved here that many years ago. Tonight, you've made my retirement, and I am retiring, y'all. Well, at least I say I'm retiring. It's official, I'm retiring. You've made this a very jolly occasion as I hopefully retire from all my community and civic responsibilities. And on September 9, when I sell my, my birthday, please know that I'll be thinking about all of you because you will have made that day just as special, and it'll be one all treasure forever along with my proclamation. So once again, I say thank you. Thank you so very much for honoring me. Thank you, one and all. Thank you, Bev. Again, I'm here for you, something to do. With that, we will begin public comment. And Ginger?
Yes, so we had several people sign up for a public comment. And if we go by the signed up people, we will have enough to meet the 30 minutes, and some people will have to speak at the next section. So only one of the first six that signed up is on the Zoom meeting. The rest appear to be in person at this time. So would you like to start with the Zoom participant?
One second. You know, so we're operating in sort of a challenging situation. If anyone has cards that plans to speak, if you can give them to Mr. Wernicki. I think Pam said someone picked one up. If you plan to speak, if you could give it to Mr. Wernicki. So we have. Okay. So go ahead and start on Zoom, please, Ginger.
Okay, the first signed up is Andrea Merriman, and she is joined by phone. I'm, I apologize if it's Andrea, but you should be able to speak at this time once you unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Andrea. Can you hear me?
You can, and if you'll just begin to speak when you're ready, and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much, everybody. And congratulations to Ms. Wingate as well for, for the years of service. I, in reviewing the contemplation of the new Dunwoody Village zoning regulations, I was struck with the question of why a decision is, is being contemplated to change the character of Dunwoody with, with an addition of high-density apartment complexes. I would, would like to ask the city council for a comment on this and what, what the planned way to address the overcrowding of schools is given the increase of the high-density apartment complexes.
So under Georgia's Open Meetings Act, we just listen, and then we'll be discussing the village later in the agenda. We don't have to talk to you, it's not interactive.
All right, well, that is all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I have three people with their hands raised currently, and then there are six people signed up.
All right, so let me go through the people that had signed up first. Richard Wernicki. Are you, Richard Wernicki, are you here? All right, we'll come back. Bill Grossman, are you here?
Yes. Bill Grossman, 5061 Hidden Branches Drive. Starting in 1976, with the original rezoning from residential to commercial, DHA encouraged DeKalb County to preserve 150 to 200 feet of forests on the west and north side of Dunwoody Village's commercial area by making that buffer a condition zoning on commercial rezonations west of Shamri Dunwoody Road, starting with CZ 77105 in 1977. That rezoning and the buffer are mentioned in Exhibit G in the packet for agenda item 10. According to staff, the proposed dotted road shown on the west side of Dunwoody Village runs through the existing pay access alley is located behind shops at Dunwoody and Dunwoody Hall shopping centers. That western buffer runs from Dunwoody United Methodist Church on the south to the 30-foot wide Colonial Pipeline easement on the north. The buffer then runs east 75 feet, 75 feet south of the Colonial Pipeline easement edge to Shamri Dunwoody Road. This appears to be the area proposed for preservation in the Planning Commission Option 3 regulating map for you today. I'm requesting that y'all follow the unanimous record indications from the Planning Commission after meetings of February and March where valid face-to-face discussion and a community meeting with planning staff and three elected officials at the Branches Clubhouse were held before COVID-19 restrictions. Please choose buffer option 3. On another note, after the public meeting in 2009, 19, the brown lines on the regulating map were removed and replaced with text elsewhere. The talks to pedestrian paths to surrounding neighborhoods being added upon redevelopment, with one glaring exception, the only dead end on this plan, a road proposed through the buffer and over the pipeline easement towards Winter Hall Lane. This was never granted through the initial public meetings held in Dunwoody Village and should be removed. Since we came out of recession, the city has had several applications for townhomes in Perimeter Center, Georgetown, and Dunwoody Village. I believe that if we allow townhomes in DV1, we will get only townhomes in DV1. Townhomes should be allowed only in DV2. Let's aim for senior, senior-friendly housing and stop trying to force elevators on townhome developers. Specify stacked flats over retail to get the housing with master on the main and the ambience that seniors desire. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Estenner?
I'm going to try and, ma'am.
I tried it yesterday.
Brian Dogel with Jacome Robertson Dogel here on behalf of DHA. My address is 945 East Paces Period Road, Northeast, Suite 2750. DHA is here in opposition to the proposed text amendment, but opposition based on whether or not y'all adopt the option 3 for the buffer that the Planning Commission unanimously recommended. When you look at the conditions that your code imposes or the standards that your code imposes, even for text amendments or for map amendments, it still requires you to consider the adjacent property, the usability of the existing property. And I would submit, when you go through those analyses, what you will see is, is this suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby properties? Well, this kind of development going in next to, or the proposed development contemplated by the text amendment going in next to existing residential neighborhoods, y'all would want to protect. And y'all would impose conditions on there. The Planning Commission looked at this and said, this was originally developed and moved from residential to commercial, and these conditions were put on there, and they should be maintained. And that's why we encourage y'all, if y'all are going to adopt it, to adopt it with buffer option 3. Again, whether the property to be affected by the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use is currently zoned. There is an existing developed commercial use of property right now. No one has suggested that this center has completely failed or anything else. So as y'all are contemplating a more dense development or higher density on the property, y'all should keep in mind that the lower density, when originally reviewed, contemplated these higher buffers. And if you're going to a higher density, higher, more intense use, you shouldn't do away with buffers that were deemed appropriate back when this stuff was originally moved from residential to commercial. When you look at your comprehensive plan, I point out two particular places on page nine, page 18. Protect properties located on the border of suburban residential neighborhood, character areas with compatible height, building placement, densities, massing, scale, buffer, tree protection, and other associated development and building regulations. Those are in place, those were put in place, and your comprehensive plan calls for those to be there. And so as y'all look at this text amendment again, I would encourage y'all to look at buffer option 3. If you look at page 18, it says, "The periphery of Dunwoody Village area will include a large transitional area to adequately protect the single-family residential and other residential homes in the area." So your comprehensive plan tells you what shall, this is a planning document y'all spent a tremendous amount of time on, and it calls for the protection of this particular buffer. Yes, they went into effect originally in 77, they've been touched on in the years since then, but that was when it was moved from residential to commercial. And as you contemplate its higher density and higher intensity use, we would encourage y'all, if you're going to move forward, that y'all do with the buffer option 3.
Thank you. Ryan Estenner? I'm going to say your last name wrong, and I'm really sorry. Estenner?
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ryan Estenner. I'm a property owner at 1416 Womack Road. We're consulting, my wife works in education, and is a Dunwoody native. We have two children under the age of five and a six-year-old dog. And while we fully support the Shamri Dunwoody Road, Womack Road intersection agreement, we did want to address the concerns that we have regarding our property. First and foremost, safety and respect for the property during the planning construction timeframe. Timeframe, we realize construction may not pick up till late in this year. Nonetheless, there is a large white oak tree that sits on our property front in Womack Road. That tree is predicted to be at least 125 years old. We would love to have a protection fence around the different lines of this tree from sure no mishaps during the process of construction. I would also like to have unstructured entrance and exit to Womack Road from our driveway as it's essential for the safety of my family and others traveling nearby. Secondly, I'm out of four, stormwater drainage and water runoff mitigation. There's a small retention pond with a 25-foot buffer on the southeast corner of the library property. This project generally approaches that area in terms of right-of-way acquisition, even though it is Dunwoody City, Dunwoody property. I'd like to request a copy of the drainage analysis from ACOM to understand what was looked at in terms of drainage. The memo itself only references the west side of Dunwoody, and there are other areas that are to be affected, most importantly, my property. And then in general, concerns about increased stormwater runoff on the property. Unfortunately, 60% of our property is on the state, 75-foot state water buffer, which does lament what we're able to do with our property, and we simply don't want it to turn into a swimming pool at some point. Third, we would love to see a beautification of the area. We realize this is a great opportunity to do so. Realizing it may be out of scope in some degrees. Someone in the comments section had mentioned possibly building steps directly on Womack Drive to the property. We thought that was a nice touch. But there's a lot of weed overgrowth and basic weeds that, quite frankly, my family and I are not able to keep up with financially and time-wise. And then fourth, the Dunwoody Village overlay rezoning of the library property itself. We realize that it will be most likely DV3, and that can be up to three stories, which essentially force our house by 1205 stories if you take into account the topography of the area. The concerns we have there is that the rear setback is a zero line, zero-foot rear setback, and that our natural light aggression would be severely diminished. And depending on what's built there, there would be some noise technical concerns as we experienced when recycling was there. As you all are aware, the library property and surrounding areas rich with history, we appreciate that. The library was once home, the original Dunwoody Elementary Cafeteria, which was lost to a fire in 1966. The immediate area is an unwritten gateway to the village, in my opinion, especially for those residents who live within.
There's 20 seconds remaining.
A village parkway. And even in the middle of a pandemic, it's been great, but it's been gratifying to see so many pedestrians, cyclists, and children and families joining the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Carolyn Sparks.
Good evening. I live at 1076 Winding Branch Circle, and I'm here to address the issue of the Winter Hall Ranch's buffer behind Dunwoody Village. When I was looking at this plan, it looks like a number of trees are even still being planned to be cut. The buffer is actually one of the remaining green spaces on the west side of Dunwoody. If you actually look, Dunwoody Nature Center's got about 22 acres of trees. Tree Forest has got about 30 acres. Brook Run has got 110, and if you only make an estimate of this buffer, it probably is 10 to 20 acres of trees and is a significant source of habitat for the wildlife. The wildlife and our natural environment is a huge draw to the people of Dunwoody and people in those neighborhoods. That's one of the reasons why we all walk to that area. And it would be tragic to remove such a significant number of trees and potential habitat for endangered species. Speaking to that, I wondered if anyone had ever gone in to evaluate whether there were endangered species. We are on the border of red cockaded woodpecker territory, which is endangered. Northern long-eared bats, which require trees, that's, that's a threatened species. Eastern indigo snake, that's a threatened species. My son spent a summer working with Walter Bland of Rock Springs Restorations and learned an awful lot about native species that are endangered through that work. And he had noticed that there were trillium growing in the Branches neighborhood, and that's a federally threatened endangered species, and only blooms in the spring. So there would be no way for us to determine if that was even there. So I strongly urge to leave the buffer as it is, and if anything's going to be done, again, I really feel like it should have an environmental impact statement because of the potential for species that might be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ginger, that, I think that completes the public comment from here. Except, let me try one more time with Mr. Wernicki.
Yes, ma'am, he's just sent an email and advice. He was unable to attend. I have Tim Bellbutowski. I apologize, but you are now able to speak if you unmute, sir.
All right, fantastic. That was pretty good on the name. I appreciate that. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, and if you'll speak up a little bit, and you have three minutes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Mayor Deutsch and council members. My name's Tim Belbutowski. I'm a resident at five zero three-three Trail Ridgeway. My wife and two children live, and we back up to the DUMC church property. And I'm here in support of option number three with regards to the buffer in the Dunwoody City Plan. Specifically, my concern about removing the buffer would be around noise. Recently, I would say in the last six months or so, there was the doggy daycare that was put in within the Dunwoody Village area. I'm probably about a quarter mile away from the doggy daycare, and I can tell you routinely, those dogs are up before seven in the morning, and I can hear them just as if they were not quite right next door to me, but clearly very audible from a quarter mile away. And I can tell you that I also can hear church sermons from DUMC, which I'm a member of, and I appreciate the outdoor sermons, but I can hear those very clearly sitting on my back porch. And I can also hear the music from Dunwoody Tavern and Porter Brewing Q, which I also appreciate. However, my concern is that as we move forward with the master plan, is that if we do remove that buffer or substantially decrease it, the noise that I can hear now from a quarter mile away is going to impact not just the houses that are backing up to that buffer, but they're going to be impacting the houses that are one and two and three streets away from that buffer as you open it up to traffic noise, light pollution, all those types of things. That being said, I'm very much excited about the input that the city's asked for of the neighbors with regard to the redevelopment of the Dunwoody Village plan and proposal. So I'm very much supportive of that, but I do have significant concerns around specifically the noise and the impact of the neighborhoods around that if we were to remove the buffer. And lastly, what I'll say is too, I would echo what the previous commenter said about nature. My kids are back in those woods all the time. We see deer, we see coyotes, we all see all kinds of stuff in there, and it's a great, great part of the city that would hate to see go away. Thank you very much for my time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Hi, Ginger.
Okay, actually, we do not have any further that have pre-registered. I do show one person with a hand raised at this time, Michael Issa. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Yes, thank you to the council members and Mayor Deutsch. I live on Hidden Branches Circle, and I also have a business in Dunwoody Village. And so I'm very invested. My children go to the elementary schools here at Austin, and I grew up here when I was younger as well. So I love Dunwoody, and I just want to mention that I'm very excited about what is happening in terms of the redevelopment of the village. However, it's come to my attention that the buffer that you guys are looking at, you have, looking at possibly encroaching on that buffer. So to echo some of the points that I've heard before, I do want to maybe follow up with some of the wildlife preservation. So these areas, like the buffer that the city has, is very important as a corridor for all kind of wildlife that really benefits everybody in the village. And this really, these kind of corridors really become the village's backyard. So not only do the people who are lucky enough to be right up against this buffer, do we, you know, are we able to enjoy it, but actually, the whole village and all of Dunwoody will be able to benefit from the diversity of wildlife that comes into a forest that is on its way to becoming mature, called an old-growth forest. So you can't simply cut trees down, plant new ones, and say that we've balanced it out. You will not have the same diversity of wildlife that will come to all of Dunwoody. They will skip over us and go over to other areas that have more old-growth forests. So I encourage you to look at the buffer option three, and I hope you guys preserve that buffer for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger, do you have anyone else?
Yes, Bona Allen, and I apologize if I've said your name incorrectly, but you can unmute and speak.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
If you speak up a little bit, please, and you have.
Yes, all right. So can you hear me better now? Okay, thank you. Mayor and council, thank you so much for letting me speak briefly here. I'm here to say how much I appreciate and respect Bev Wingate. I just recently met her in the last few years. I currently am honored to serve as the Chair of the Alcohol Licensing Board for the City of Dunwoody. So, and I just recently met her through that process and became aware of all the dedication and the wonderful things that she has done for the City of Dunwoody. And so I am honored to have served with her, and I'm honored to know her. And I'm also honored to see that the City of Dunwoody is honoring her here later in this meeting through this proclamation. So that's what I wanted to say, is to thank Bev Wingate for more than forty years of service to the City of Dunwoody, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just so you know, we moved her up because we were having some crowd control issues due to COVID restrictions, but thank you very much. You'll appreciate that. All right, with that, Ginger, is that the end?
I have a Sharon Frank with a hand raised as well, and you can unmute and speak.
Go ahead. Sharon, are you there?
Can you hear me?
No. Can you speak up a lot?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Not really. Is it possible for you to be louder?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here and being a part of our Dunwoody community. I've been a resident for almost forty years. I'm very proud to be living in the same home. I've worked extremely hard to maintain my tree canopy, which sits quite close to my home. When the leaves are down, as the gentleman previously said, the sound, of course, is much louder. I appreciate everything that Bill Grossman has said dating back to the nineteen seventy-seven covenants, which Jim Leesendorf, who no longer is with us, he has passed on, he worked tirelessly to keep those covenants in order. And when they were ready to be renewed, we were denied that capability to renew them, not quite knowing what was to come, and this has come now. So I'm pleased, asking you very passionately, to maintain the canopy of the trees, to keep the forest floor and that beautiful tree line available to all of us. And I vote option three quite passionately. I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Ginger, is that, yeah?
If anyone else would like to speak in the first public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I do not see any more hands raised at this time.
That concludes public comment. Thank you all for participating. And now we are on to reports and presentations, capital improvement plan, and I believe that the presenters tonight are going to be presenting remotely. I think that's correct.
That's correct. Hey, Mayor, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I'm upstairs now, so I'll shout a little bit if you can't. The first presentation, I think, is the CIP plan, and Linda Neighbors, our Finance Director, and Richard Plato, our Assistant Finance Director, have been working on this for the past few weeks, and I'd like to kind of set the table for Mayor and Council on this. During the retreat back in early March, before the world changed, one of the goals of the council was to start looking at capital planning as a process, because what the city had was we had a plan over here for transportation with a lot of things we would like to do in it. We had a plan over here for parks and rec with some things we would like to do in it. And we were working on those as we could, but what we didn't do was adopt through the annual budgeting process, an actual CIP that showed what we could possibly afford, given revenue projections over the next five years or so, and what we couldn't afford. So one of the things that we wanted to do is in the budget process this year, and the draft that the council will see on the thirty-first, when it's released through the mayor and city manager, is a budget that actually has not only the operating budget for twenty-twenty-one in it, but also a five-year CIP at that point. What it is, is it's just a plan. It's a plan that shows over the next five years what we could afford in SLOST, in the next five years what we could afford in hotel motel, and also in the next five, what we could afford in general fund tax. It's also going to give you a chance to see projects that we can't afford. So in other words, things above our current revenue estimates. And this is a document that council can also adopt with the budgeting process. So instead of adopting a project of a million dollars instantly, you could say, here it is a million dollars with two hundred thousand dollars a year for five years, okay? We need to start with baby steps with this, and the adoption of the plan will be the first thing. And of course, the plan that's adopted this October will change as of mid-year next year, as things get refined and as the economy changes. But one of the things we realized that we need to do was bring to council, and that's the discussion you're seeing today, an actual kind of CIP one oh one, kind of showing you how the money is put together and how a project develops and shows. So that's what Linda and Richard are going to do tonight. I just wanted to kind of inform y'all that this is kind of like the precursor to what you're going to see in two weeks.
Thank you. Thank you.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Richard Plato. I'm the Assistant Finance Director. Can everybody, I want to check two things. Can everybody hear me, and can everybody see my presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So as Jay introduced, we're going to give really an overview of the capital improvement process that we've undertaken as part of the twenty-twenty-one budget process. And I put together a brief presentation here to just kind of describe where we're at and what you will see next. So just some background real quickly. What is a capital asset? Basically, it's property, plant, equipment, infrastructure, that includes roads and sidewalks. Any of your fixed assets, basically, is what's classified as a capital asset. For the City of Dunwoody, assets are, have an initial individual cost of more than ten thousand dollars and an estimated useful life in excess of one year. So that's how we classify capital assets. And the cost of normal maintenance repairs that don't add value or don't extend the useful life of the asset is not capitalized. So a couple of examples, take a vehicle, if you do an oil change or if you change tires, that's not a capital asset. Similar to a building, if you paint a building, interior or exterior, that's not capitalized as part of the asset either. So just kind of setting some framework as to what is a capital asset. That's the purpose of this slide. The next slide talks about what is a capital improvement plan. And again, it's a five-year plan, as Jay talked about, for getting, for documenting how we want to upgrade, maintain, and replace the city's capital assets. It's a collaborative process, so there's multiple departments involved in this process. Finance will lead it and coordinate it like we do the operating budget, but we get input from community development with our comprehensive use plan and any master plans that may be out there. We get public works input, we get parks and rec input. So it really is a collaborative plan. For the CIP that you will see, there's three major funding sources, SLOST, Hotel Motel Fund, and then our General Capital Projects Fund. And we'll dive into each one of those as we go through this presentation. Finally, just to kind of set the stage for a, again, a capital improvement plan and particularly a capital project. So we can allocate money to a capital project, and it can cover multiple years. So if a project, it might be an eighteen-month project, for example, so you could see budget in one year, and there could be an additional budget in the following year. And keep in mind that any money that's unspent in any fix, any year, will be retained in the project, and it'll carry forward into the next year. So we can only kind of reallocate between projects by an amendment to the, to the budget that council must approve or during our annual budgeting process. And the example down below is just to kind of hammer home, if we've got a million-dollar project or a million-dollar budget in year one for Project A, and we spend six hundred thousand dollars, that four hundred thousand dollars will carry forward into year two and will be available to spend in year two. And to take it one step further, in year two, if we add in, for example, an additional million dollars of new money, then that project will be one point four million dollars that will be available to spend in the next year. So again, the goal of this is to keep in mind that we are adopting a multi-year project, and so that money can carry forward as it's, if it's not spent. So we've got, again, the three funding sources for the CIP. The first one is SLOST. It was adopted by voters in a referendum in November of twenty-seventeen. Collections will run April of twenty-eight, April of twenty-eighteen to March of twenty-twenty-four. For Dunwoody, we have three large categories, so transportation improvement projects, and there were some items that were included. It's not limited to those, but it does include infrastructure preservation, pedestrian bicycle path improvements, congestion relief, safety and operational improvements. The other two categories, public safety facilities and related to capital equipment, that's mainly your police vehicles is what we're using that funding for. And then the last category is repair of capital outlay projects. And right now, we're mainly using those for facilities and parks-related projects, that capital projects that need repairs. So keep those three categories in mind as we kind of would move on to the next slide. So this shows, and we'll start on the left-hand side, so it shows categories. So you've got revenue, majority of that revenue is obviously sales tax. And then on the, going down by the expenditures, we've got our large groupings, so transportation improvements, as we talked about, that's your intersection improvements, sidewalks, things of that nature, public safety being your vehicles, and then facilities and parks, repairs and maintenance to capital outlays there. Just to give some history of what we spent in each category in twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen compared to the revenue that we received each year, that's the first two columns of numbers in the slide. If you look at the middle column, twenty-twenty current budget, so when we had adopted the budget earlier this year, we adopted a six-point-eight million dollar revenue and expenditure budget. Obviously, the pandemic occurred and things have changed. And so what we did, if you look at the proposed budget, we'll call it, we acknowledged that there will be some slowdown in sales tax collections. So we anticipate about five-point-one million dollars this year, and to balance the budget, kind of broke it up into the categories as you see on the screen there. So that's just acknowledging that, again, there has been a slowdown in SLOST, and we want to make sure, because SLOST we collect monthly, we need to make sure we accumulate the necessary cash in order to pay the bills as they become available, manage cash flow. And so the last column out there is twenty-one to twenty-four. Again, keeping in mind that the current SLOST expires in March of twenty-twenty-four. We certainly hope it to be extended beyond that, but for the time being, for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four, we think there'll be about seventeen-point-one million dollars as we see today in revenue. And below is how we anticipate allocations to large categories of projects occurring. Again, we need to go through that budget process and prioritize and make sure that all the projects make sense. And when you get the proposed budget, you will see individual projects in there as to how we anticipate funding those. So that covers the major SLOST fund there. The next is hotel motel, and so that's an excess tax that we collect from, based on room rentals. Right now, it's eight percent of net taxable rent. Currently, forty-three-point-seven-five percent of hotel motel revenue goes to Discover Dunwoody. Thirty-seven and a half percent is transferred to the general fund for special events and marketing, and then the remaining eighteen-point-seven-five percent available resides within the hotel motel fund that's available for capital projects. Now, because hotel motel is a special revenue fund, the proceeds can be used for specific purposes only. In this case, it really can be used for promoting tourism, conventions and trade shows, or any capital projects related to tourism, basically. So we have to keep that in mind when dealing with the hotel motel proceeds as to how they're a little bit more specific and how they can be used. Getting into a little bit of detail as well here, so this is just the project, so how we're using, how we're proposing to use those. So how we're using, how we're proposing to use those capital dollars that are set aside in the Hotel Motel Fund. 18 and 19, again, for reference, is actual as to what we spent. Beginning, at the beginning of the year, we had a 2020 proposed budget or current budget that was adopted, about $789,000. We will be coming back at some point this year with a budget amendment to add some projects in. It totals about $1.3 million in additional projects. Pulling, a couple of these projects will get pulled over from the General Capital Projects Fund into Hotel Motel as we could use the resources that we had available and within Hotel Motel to do those projects. And then again, that last column, 2021 to 2024, we estimate right now to have about $250,000 a year available within the Hotel Motel Fund for capital projects. So keeping that in mind, again, when you get your proposed budget, you'll see some of the projects that we think we can fund with those dollars. But we're currently forecasting that about $250,000 available within that fund for capital expenditures. So the last is General Capital Projects Fund. So this is funded with transfers from the General Fund. And this is our most flexible fund. We can post or fund a variety of projects within this, this fund. So again, going to some history there. For the last two years, we have some information, some IT technology needs that we have funded. Facilities, a lot of that's on the City Hall, for example, some of those facilities. Police does have some funding available outside of their SLOST dollars and same with public works. And then for parks, they've spent the large majority of it. One particular project, Booker Run Project, Booker Run Park Project, has accounted for a lot of that spending. So that's what we spent for the last two years within that General Capital Projects Fund. Now, going forward, those transfers to the General Fund could be challenged, I should say, is a good word. And so we're trying to really manage that. These are the current projects that we have identified for this year. So fiscal year 2020. We adopted a budget that was $325,000. If you look in that middle column there, we will come with an agenda item to, to update the budget, basically, based on that proposed budget column. We're actually going to pull the lighting into the Hotel Motel Fund, if you remember that from the previous slide. And then we'll notate some additional projects here that we'd like to do with some of this funding. But that far right column does show a zero right now. And we're, we're meeting, trying to decide how much funding will be available from that transfer from the General Fund into Capital Projects Fund. To give you an idea of what we think we're going to fund or what the needs are within the General Capital Projects Fund, or just needs in general, really. On this slide here, so information technology, we try to set aside generally about 1,000, I'm sorry, $100,000 a year for any technology needs. So that can be any hardware needs, any server needs, storage needs, things of that nature. We want to make sure we've got some dollars set aside to fund that. But we also have a bucket of what we call unfunded capital projects. And when we went through the process, Parks and Rec identified about $16.5 million of projects from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2025 that we currently do not have funding available for. These projects, there's a multitude of ways that we could fund them. Hotel Motel, obviously, this General Capital Projects Funds. And we could even explore other financing sources, depending on the timing and the prioritization of these unfunded $16.5 million project, worth of project that were identified as part of the process. So I think that's it. Yes, on a high level, that was kind of where we are right now with the 2021 to 2025 capital improvement plan. You will get more detail, project-specific level detail in the proposed budget that you receive at the end of this month. But as Jay mentioned, we wanted to go on ahead and just give you an overview of kind of some expectation, what we've been doing behind the scenes to get to what's going to be included in the proposed budget. And I will be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
In this year's 2020 budget for IT, it was $200,000. I'm curious if any of that can be recoverable from CARESAPP funding.
I'll take, I'll take that from my end, this Jay. Actually, the answer would be no at that point, because that would be supplantation. Anything that we've already had budgeted, we can't get reimbursed in that matter. Hey, to burst your bubble, but that's an easy answer.
Jay, you got to speak a little louder next time, please.
Yeah, not necessary questions. Richard, thanks for a great presentation. I'm just very excited that we're moving forward with this, having an official capital improvement plan. I think it's vital. We have a very, very long wish list and very, very limited resources available to fund that wish list. And this will be a great way for the city to, number one, be transparent in the projects that we want to move forward with, but also for us to prioritize and keep our eye on the prize. We can, we can work together as a group and with the community to decide what exactly are the most important projects, prioritize those and then identify the funding for those. So this is a very important piece of the puzzle for our budgeting and for us doing the things that we want to do. So I'm very excited to have this moving forward. I do, I do want to say, and Richard, you mentioned this in your presentation as well. I think it's important to understand this will be a, not a static document, but a dynamic document, something that we will have the ability to change and update. If something comes along that we decide is of importance, we can move it up the list or we can add it to the list. We're not set in stone and bound to something. So that's, that's important as well. And I know you mentioned the three primary funding sources. Obviously, SLOST, the Hotel Motel, and just, you know, the general capital project funds. But I want to make sure that we don't restrict ourselves to that because there are a lot of other resources available to us that I think we need to really be aggressive in exploring, especially in these times, and being creative in finding new revenue sources to help fund some of these projects that, that we want to complete and that the citizens want us to complete. So, but thank you for a good presentation. Thank you for all the hard work getting us to this point. And I really look forward to this being a part of the budgeting process for this year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good report. I look forward to seeing the detail as we enter the budgeting process here in the next week or two. Thank you.
No, thank you. I have the same question as Stacy. Really hoping the answer is yes.
So just to let the citizens know, if you really, look at that difference between FY '18 and '19 on the capital funding, where we spent $10.5 million on parks and the general operating fund. And look at what it's going down to. Those are all zeros in that column books, FY '21 and '24, zero. So really, you know, what do we want our city to do? What do you want our city to become? We really got to, all of our citizens are staying engaged. And we're really looking at other streams of revenue as well that we can enhance and continue building that quality-like city that we all love to see. Richard, on a more of a lower level, I never, I'm not, I'm not scheming. Maybe you could give me, set us an example of maybe another city that already has a capital improvement plan list that, just to get educated with? Because I'm looking at it, are we looking at the all-inclusive, would A, infrastructure improvements, okay, that's a project. But would it also include, say, buying new police cars every, every so many years? Would that be on the same list?
Yes, that, that's correct. If you look at, within that SLOST fund, the majority of the dollars set aside for public safety is police vehicles. Depending, obviously, on what they get, there could be a certain number of vehicles that they can purchase each year. But yes, we're very cognizant of the age of their fleet. And we want to make sure that they're driving safe cars, obviously. So yes, there are dollars set aside in SLOST. In terms of your first question, I'm a little biased, I guess, for lack of a better word. I previously worked at City of Smyrna here over in Cobb County. And they had a pretty elaborate CIP document. That could be a city that, if you wanted to go to their website and take a look at it, I think that was a good document that we put together there. Just an example off the top of my head.
Yeah, thank you, thanks, Richard. I just look forward to having this as our guiding document. Follow up, and we know what priorities the citizens know as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda. Council, do you have any questions or any of the items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Moved by Jim.
Okay.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sharon, that was unanimous.
Mayor, the next item, we're moving to business items and action items now. And item number eight, I'll read the caption of the ordinance. It is an ordinance to amend Chapter 27 of the City of Dunwoody zoning ordinance to adopt a new Dunwoody Village Districts going regulation and to repeal conflicting sections.
Okay, for discussion purposes, council, I think we could probably ask all our questions with this. And who is presenting from staff? Or is it TSW? Looking up because I'm talking to the sky. They're all upstairs. And for those watching at home, the reason they're all upstairs is last week we had a lot of problems, well, two weeks ago, we had a lot of problems with the presentations. And so people couldn't see them at home. So we thought this would work better.
Caleb Rosico will be presenting for us.
I need yourself. Yeah.
I need.
There you go.
Great, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. As Richard mentioned, my name is Caleb Rosico and I'm a planner with TSW. And what I wanted to do this evening, for the sake of members of the public who may not have seen all of the presentation two weeks ago, is I'd like to go through it very briefly to give a little bit of background. And then more importantly, I'd like to point out some key considerations and changes based on some of the conversation that, that has occurred based on that particular meeting. So before you tonight, you have three items for consideration. You have an update to the master plan. You have a new zoning district called the Dunwoody Village or DV zoning district that would implement that plan. A series of zoning map changes. And then, as Mr. Olson will mention, there are a series of amendments to the buffer ordinance that will be later on. Now, what I've done, for those of you who may have attended the previous meeting, is I've noted key changes in yellow. So as I go through the presentation, please note that any of the new content has been, has been highlighted. So a little bit of background. As you may remember, we were hired by the city to accomplish two main tasks. The first task was to look at updating the Dunwoody Village master plan, which dated from 2011, and then putting in place a series of zoning changes that would support that plan. The 2011 plan, for those of you who may remember, calls for creating a true downtown in Dunwoody Village. A walkable and bike-able village center featuring open spaces, a mix of uses, new streets, and really encouraging redevelopment. And the great thing is, is that through this process, which was heavily grounded on public input, we reaffirmed many of those policies. There was a strong support for the vision of the 2011 plan with a couple of modifications that I'll talk to you about. The, you can't see it. Okay.
You could share your screen.
I apologize. Let's see if this works. Is that better?
But now you need to make it like a PowerPoint presentation.
Great, sorry, I apologize for that. So as was mentioned, this process was heavily founded on public input. We had a series, oh, I'm sorry.
You need to get it in presentation mode. I'm sorry. Right now.
It's, it shows in presentation on mine. Let me see if I advanced. Does that work?
You can go edit it.
Yeah. It looks like you need to enable editing.
I would minimize your screen and go back to your original PowerPoint before you launch it.
Okay, minimize the screen. Yeah, it is in PowerPoint. Here we go, let's see if enable editing works.
Now try.
Okay.
Doing slideshow.
Is that good?
Yeah.
You good? Great. All right, I apologize for that, technical difficulties, but we will be adaptable. So as we mentioned, this process has been heavily based on public outreach. We began with a community workshop in June of 2019, where we had about 200 people come by. And they reviewed the previous plans. We talked about sort of zoning and transportation considerations. And we even conducted a walking tour so that people who may not necessarily walk the village often could understand how it feels to experience the space as a pedestrian. That feedback directly shapes the presentation and the recommendations that have been presented this evening. There was also a very well-attended open house in November of last year that really took the ideas developed at the workshop and provided options for how to realize them. Particular recommendations and, and particular concepts about street design and land use and transportation, and all of the pieces that make a vibrant village area. There were opportunities for the public to comment there using worksheets. And then even more, more impressive, we had over 300 public responses later on in a supplemental online, online survey that was created. Now, all of these received resounding support for the concept of the idea, the concept of reinforcing the village as a really main street or heart of Dunwoody. And that, that really shaped the ordinances before you this evening. So the first major ordinance for consideration this evening relates to the master plan update. As was mentioned, there is a very strong support for the general spirit of the master plan today. But there was a lot of discussion at that process about how do we, what do we envision the design of the major roadways through the village as being over the long term? And so we looked at potential redesign options for Shambly Dunwoody Road and Mount Vernon Road. These are completely aspirational concepts that we know will take participation of the city to realize. But we looked at those and have proposed language to update the master plan to reflect these changes. Now, based on some of the council comments at our last meeting, we've incorporated provisions from the current master plan that talk about speed reductions and minimize crossing distance. And so we had also looked at what the potential impact of this long-term vision may be. The vision for the right-of-way both include a 100-foot cross-section. And believe it or not, most of Mount Vernon Road is actually 100 feet today. And most of Shambly Dunwoody Road is also 100 feet today. So the proposed vision of a slightly narrower roadway with sidewalks, bicycle facilities, sidewalks, trees and landscaping would actually fit, for the most part, within the right-of-way. But as requested by, by some of the council, we've prepared a map for your packet that shows where those sort of pinch points are. So as you look at the section, anything in blue is the current 100-foot right-of-way. So there would be no impact there. But there are a couple of properties down by the, down by the school farmhouse, for example, south of Mount Vernon, where there are some pinch points where obviously, if this project ever moves forward, the design, the schematic design would need to be adjusted for that. But generally speaking, this is a vision. This is something that will require much more engineering work, but it does begin to support. But it does begin to support the idea of making these corridors more of main streets than just sort of pass-through high-speed conduits. So that was the master plan. But the bulk of our process focuses on updating the zoning code and development regulations. And so what we've done is prepare a new set of zoning districts that would only apply in Dunwoody Village that would really support the vision of the community. They would create a sense of place. They would make development decisions predictable, fair and cost-effective. And actually, in some cases, because they're based more on design than just sort of regimented rules, they actually do provide a bit more flexibility and predictability for both developers and residents. The primary part of the new zoning districts, the new Dunwoody Village districts are what we call a regulating plan. A regulating plan is a type of customized zoning map that would apply in Dunwoody Village that shows where the three proposed Dunwoody Village districts are. DV1, which is Village Commercial and is primarily the sort of commercial areas along the periphery of the district. DV2, which is Village Office, which applies to the properties that are currently zoned office and institutional-type uses. DV3, Village Residential, which include the few properties that are zoned residential today and the church. And then DV4, Village Center, which is really intended to be the most intensive mixed-use area. Now, the regulating plan is also unique in that it shows site-specific requirements, unlike a zoning map. So when you look at the regulating map, the regulating plan, you'll see that, for example, there are blue lines which are intended to indicate where shop fronts, whose commercial character is required where buildings touch the street. There are potential locations for new roadways shown. Instead of identifying and creating block sizes. And there are even a couple of locations of pre-designated open spaces. And we'll talk about those more in terms of parking and open spaces and buffers shortly. But really, the big idea here is to use the zoning code to first and foremost create a transportation network that relates to and supports the land use vision. Today, Dunwoody Village has a transportation network that pretty much is made up of two major corridors. Ashley Dunwoody Road and Mount Vernon, which is generally speaking, two lanes outside of the village, five lanes within the village, and then Shambly Dunwoody Road, Robert's Lane, which again are two lanes outside of the village, a bit wider in certain parts of the village. And all of these roadways feed into the village and, as you would imagine, create, and as you know, create areas of high-traffic volume and congestion in certain locations. So what this code would do is would put in place requirements that when properties redevelop, and only when properties redevelop, developers would have to put in place their own required public street network. The network would be opportunities for people to move around their site in the same way that they would put in driveways and parking lot islands. But over time, it would also form to form and interconnect to provide a parallel network for Dunwoody Village. This would do several things. First, it would provide alternative routes for both drivers and pedestrians and cyclists. It would also require, as I mentioned, supporting of the land use vision, walkable development patterns where it's easier to walk because there are smaller blocks. And then, of course, there are also opportunities for additional streets that are not shown on here that could be provided. For example, if the church ever redeveloped very, very long-term, standards would apply there. If Nandina Lane is ever closed by the city, standards would apply there. And I did want to point out, this would also not preclude potential roundabouts in the area. The regulating plan also... Should I say, the code also talks about proposed trails. Now, the 2011 plan has a very robust trail network in it, and so we carried that over directly into the new code. There's actually language that says new trails would be provided in a conformance with any adopted city plan. The idea here is that there should be opportunities for residents to walk to the village. And like the streets, these would only occur with redevelopment. Now, I did want to point out that there are a couple of locations in the current livable centers plan that show trails running from the village into adjacent neighborhoods. And I just wanted to remind everyone that these are highly flexible, highly tentative. And there would really have to be agreement between adjacent homeowners and homeowners associations and then commercial property owners if that was ever appropriate in order to make that happen. So there's no set mandate per se, but the code does lay in place a framework for making that happen. Additionally, this new Dunwoody Village district significantly enhances the requirements for open space. And it does that in a couple of ways. First, it sets up with types of open spaces that are required in the village. And those range from plazas to parks to greens. They're all very specifically designed. But it also begins to suggest where those could go. So if, for example, you look at the regulating plan in front of you, you'll notice that there are a couple of properties down near the post office behind it that are actually shown as open space. And these could be required open spaces with redevelopment. The idea here is that the residents told us at the meeting that they're really interested in having sort of a town green or a focal point for Dunwoody. And that this idea of a centralized gathering space would be a great opportunity for that. So that was shown in the code. But as with any of the code provisions, would require careful coordination between the property owners and the city to actually implement it. And then, as I mentioned, the code is very strong in terms of defining the design of open spaces. There are standards for what counts. And what counts has to be truly usable public space. It can't be parking lot landscape islands. It can't be a two-foot strip of buffer that no one uses. It has to be a truly usable and accessible open space that is something that is usable for people. So that's a major change. Now, there were a couple of questions at the previous council meeting that related to the landscape aspects of this code. And I wanted to remind council that we coordinated with the staff and we have confirmed that all of the citywide landscaping standards would continue to apply. So for example, maintenance, irrigation, making sure that the landscaping is healthy. All of that would apply in the village in the same way that it applies outside of the village. However, we would like council's opinion on a couple of, really one landscaping matter. There was a suggestion made that we might want to consider prohibiting artificial turf. And I understand that there's a project in Dunwoody that may have created some concern over that. If that is council's discretion, by all means, it's a viable idea. But I did want to point out that there are really some conditions where artificial turf is often the best practice. For example, playgrounds, they're frequently used. Outdoor dining or sort of outdoor bocce courts, they're frequently used. So I would encourage council, if that is the direction you want to go, that we should probably think about some exceptions where it really does make sense for both maintenance and safety perspective. The other thing the code does is it enables and makes legal public parking. And it does that by identifying locations on the regulating map where developments are allowed to exceed their otherwise applicable parking cap if they provide public parking. Many of the public may not realize that Dunwoody limits the amount of parking that you can have on a site. And so if you are going to provide public parking, you need to have a mechanism for raising that cap. And so this code would do that. There would also be all of the design standards you would imagine for parking decks, meaning they have to look like buildings. They have to be screened. And if they're on one of those storefront streets, they have to have commercial at the bottom. Additionally, as you know, the proposed Dunwoody Village districts do incorporate changes from the buffer requirement. Now, as it stands today, there are no buffer requirements between the Dunwoody Village overlay and the adjacent properties. You would refer to the underlying zoning and see what those buffers are. And typically, they vary from zero to 30 feet. And so there is a bit of legislation after this presentation that would amend those particular buffer standards to reference the Dunwoody Village zoning district. And as several members of the public and council asked at our last meeting, we've sort of shown and read here where those buffers would apply. Really, they're anywhere that a DV district touches a residential district outside of it. But there would be no standards internally. Now, as you've heard from public comments at the beginning of the meeting, the design of that buffer and the width of that buffer is, I think, a very important policy question. So as initially proposed by the consultant team, we had initially recommended taking the typical TY3, which is the 30-foot wide buffer that the city has, and applying it around the perimeter of Dunwoody Village. This would be buffer option one in your packet. However, when we presented that, buffer option one, showing here, when we presented that to the public, we received a lot of pushback. There were many adjacent homeowners who were very concerned about the 30-foot buffer that otherwise applies in the city of Dunwoody. So based on that public feedback, it was increased to 75 feet, which is the option two that the public has been mentioning. That, again, would apply in various areas around the periphery. The graphic here is one prepared by staff showing where the 75-foot buffer would apply. It's in yellow behind the sort of DV1 Public Shopping Center. But adjacent to the church, adjacent to other properties, because they're very shallow, the 30-foot would continue to apply under this particular option. And then staff also pointed out that there are a couple of properties, the townhomes, for example, on Dunwoody Village Parkway, that have a wider buffer required by condition of rezoning at 40 feet. And so those would obviously continue to apply. So this would be option two. And then, when we presented to the planning commission, we had additional members of the public express their concern about the 75-foot buffer. And so the planning commission voted to impose a 150-foot average buffer as shown sort of on the left or western side of the study area here that aligns with the currently wooded areas that the public was talking about. And so this would be buffer option three in the packet as prepared by staff. And so that is that option, which one is more appropriate or which one is ideal for the city of Dunwoody, I think is a very important policy decision for the mayor and council's consideration. But as noted, TSW and staff's initial proposal was 30 feet. We increased it to 75 based on community feedback. And then the planning commission increased it to 150 behind the Public Shopping Center based on community comment. And then finally, a few final revisions or provisions of the code. There are greatly enhanced streetscape standards that basically would require all new development to upgrade sidewalks and street trees and lighting and benches as redevelopment occurs. Similar to what you've seen around Plutter today, where when new developments come in, they have to upgrade the sidewalks. And so this would apply in Dunwoody Village as well. And then one of the final aspects of the Dunwoody Village code is that it is truly what we like to call in the planning world, a form-based code in that it regulates the design of buildings through what are called building types. It defines four different building types: shop fronts, general buildings, townhouses and civic, and has standards that apply to each of these. The standards have been created by TSW based on the work that was done about two years ago by historical concepts and as reinforced through the planning process. It incorporates all of the design requirements you would imagine in a walkable community. For example, requiring windows and doors facing the street, pulling buildings up to the street, prohibiting blank walls, and then requiring retail in certain areas as noted. The same standards would apply both to mixed-use buildings and residential. Although residential options are really limited in the village, there would be no detached houses allowed. Townhouses would only be allowed in DV1 and DV3. DV3 being the already residentially used properties and DV1 being the mixed use. And then, as several members of the public pointed out earlier, multifamily housing would be allowed in all the districts, but apartments would require a special land use permit. There are also a couple of changes to commercial uses. One of the things that we heard very strongly from the public was that there was a lot of concern about the proliferation of banks in Dunwoody Village. And so the proposed districts would limit banks to no closer than a quarter mile from another bank. That would be codified and would really effectively prevent any new banks from coming in. But obviously, an existing bank could renovate and become a different bank. There would also be prohibitions on gas stations, car repaired shops and drive-throughs. A lot of that is already in the village overlay today. And then uses would really be capped to be more village in scale. So the maximum store size would be around 50,000 square feet, which is really a typical public. But something larger like a Walmart or a Target would not be allowed in the village because of the use size restrictions. And then, of course, there are architectural standards that sort of build on the previous work of the master plan and regulate materials and glass design and architectural standards. And then there were a couple of questions at the last council meeting that I did want to touch upon. The first one was one of the council members had looked at the code very closely and had noticed that there were a couple of terms that were not defined in here. And after talking to staff, we've confirmed that any term not defined in this district would default to the citywide definitions, which are found in section 27, 621 of the zoning ordinance. One of those terms is impervious coverage, which basically means the portion of ground where water can percolate through. So it's basically everything that is not... I'm sorry. Impervious is the area that water cannot go through. So it's basically areas that are landscaping or permeable paving. And all of that is defined in the general zoning ordinance and in the city's stormwater management ordinances. Now, the final thing I wanted to mention to the council and the members of the public is that the village is intended to have more village scale. And so buildings are limited in height to a maximum of three stories in DV2 and 3, to four stories in DV1, except adjacent to residential, and then a maximum of five stories in DV5. These numbers are very comparable to what the zoning actually allows in some of the other districts in the city and are compatible with sort of the image surveys that were done through this process. There is no residential density number per se because, as I've mentioned, this is a form-based code, which means that every building type has different standards for lot coverage and design and area. But we have gone and we have looked at what might be achievable if every single property in the village ever redeveloped to its full potential. And so what we did to sort of qualify or quantify that number is what we call a build-out analysis, which effectively is a tool that planners use to show the carrying capacity of a zoning district. The amount of development that a zoning district could accommodate if every property were redeveloped. It does ignore market forces, and so it may always overestimate. But based on that, if every single property that could accommodate housing and could accommodate residential uses in the village were to redevelop, there would be a maximum of up to 3,000 units carrying capacity. Now, we know that that is an extremely high number. We also know that that is not likely to be supported by the market anytime soon. But again, if magically everyone sold every property in the village tomorrow and the council agreed with special land use permits and all of the other design provisions, you might see as many as 3,000 units of housing. So we prepared that number. So we prepared that number because we know that some of the council were very interested in knowing what it was. And so that concludes my presentation. Your packet does have the specific legislation that would adopt the ordinance that I've just summarized, that would rezone from the current underlying base zoning in DV Village and Dunwoody Overlay to the new village districts. And assuming that happens, the code is written in such a way that that rezoning would be effective immediately and would be the guiding document going forward. So I know that I've talked a lot, and I apologize for that, but I did want to go into detail for both members of the council and members of the public who may not have been able to join us last time. So I would love to answer any questions that you may have or clarify any points. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, I'm getting a little bit of feedback that we all need to make sure we're speaking into our microphones tonight. They're having some difficulties hearing us. Questions, comments, concerns? Let me start with you, Tom.
I'm okay right now. Thank you.
I don't have questions. I have a concern that, and I can't, I guess, where I am at with this is I think this has been a very good process. We've had a lot of public input. We've had some very good folks working for us on this with Caleb and our in-house staff. Great input from the public. I'm, you know, I think where we're not there yet is with the, you know, this question of buffers. And I don't think it's something we have to decide tonight. I think the issue is that there are those who think that there is an existing, you know, large buffer that may or may not be there. There's differences of opinion as to whether this buffer is in place legally, and we're still sorting through that. So I guess from my perspective, you know, there's no need to rush into this. There's no need that we pass something tonight as for certain. And I think that we need to make sure that this is very carefully considered. And so given that, I'm going to kick this off by moving that we defer any action on this until the first meeting in October, which would be October 12th, which would give us plenty of time to get this sorted out. And, you know, perhaps we might even have a work session on this and to more fully discuss this. I'll second for discussion.
Sharon, did you get that? It was a motion to defer until the first meeting in October, which is October 12th, made by Jim, moved, seconded by John.
Thank you, Mayor.
So with that, I'll open up the discussion. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, my only real comment really comes down to the buffers and whether we have legal representation. There's been a lot of documents, a lot of old documents, there've been open records going back to DeKalb County. And I'm not completely up to speed on what's been found. Is there any way we can get a legal briefing tonight to know where we're at in case there is a decision that can be rendered tonight? Eric, is there legal counsel?
I don't think we're ready for that. The open records request did not come back complete, but you can ask them for their opinion.
I'd love to hear exactly what they've done and what is available for council to make decisions on.
Eric, are you there?
I'm having trouble hearing the question. I'm sorry.
So the question is, as John is wondering where we are with document gathering, and I was telling him that the open records request that came in today did not look like it went back to the seventies. Can you hear us?
That's correct. We just got them today from DeKalb County. They did not go back to nineteen-seventy-seven, which we specifically asked them for. So we're going to research it again. And I think Jay knows people down there. He can have them look further for us.
And also to add to that too, Richard, which is, we've also asked our legal department, Bill is on standby there, to do an independent search just from a legal standpoint as well, just to add to that.
That's correct. We filed open records, and we'll be contacting the county attorney regarding the records that we've received and why we haven't received other records.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure that if we were in any way, shape, or form that we could make a decision on this night based on legal opinion. If the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer is there, we can move forward on that item, right? It's a matter of what's available to us. I'm trying to understand.
Any other questions?
I did actually have a question. It was somebody from public comments. On the library in that site, and the buffer is thirty feet, and it is a significant down slope. So what is the buffer there now? Is it thirty feet or is it less?
I believe it's less.
So we would actually be increasing the, okay.
Yeah, the buffers only apply on the western boundary and the village townhomes.
Richard, can you please, on the maps where they have the street and through the buffer in the arrows, can you clarify that for the public?
Yeah, on the map, on the northern section, there's a comment on there, and we're prepared to remove that comment. It's, so the street can cut through there. It's misleading, so we'll take it off.
Thank you. John?
One more question. If we could look at twenty-seven dash one twelve dash five. It's the Dunwoody Village Four Senate District requirements. I'm seeing townhouse being identified as a section. I'm looking at, this is page ten of the document. There's a black dot next to townhouse, which to me means that it's available. But when I look down in the next figure down, it shows detached houses unavailable. I guess I was, we had a public comment tonight that was talking about the possibility of townhomes in Dunwoody Village Four. I believe that might have been the public comment. And two. So I'm just trying to figure out what the, that seems odd with the Dunwoody Village Four, section twenty-seven dash one twelve dash five. There's the word townhouse, and there's a black dot next to it. The townhomes weren't supposed to be allowed there.
You have a question?
I don't need an answer tonight. It's on the record as being asked. And I know this is going to be probably deferred, so we can talk about this later. I'm just trying to understand what's available where and why. As the economy is changing, housing types might change. We can talk about a number of houses and housing units depending on different sections of the city and different parts of the plan. I think we need to hash some of that out too, staff has given us numbers. So I know there's going to be no final vote tonight, but this is something I wonder.
Yeah, and I would recommend that council is willing to have a call meeting just to talk about this, like a workshop. Like a workshop, if we may have lost our connection upstairs. But that we have a workshop, because I have a lot of questions about, I have a lot of questions and concerns about density. And also, I need to understand why some single-family detached housing isn't allowed, which I think is kind of what you're asking. I think townhomes by their nature are attached. And so, so among other questions, I'd like to see those questions answered. So we will continue, we will have the call meeting. It will be advertised so that the public knows we're going to talk about the village and the plan. And then, and we will let people know when that is. We are going to continue to do some of our due diligence on the legal issues first. With that, are there any other questions or comments on this item? So we have a motion to defer made by Jim and seconded by John. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sharon, that passes unanimously.
The next item on the agenda goes along with this item. Eight, nine, ten are all connected. But it's a resolution to amend the City of Dunwoody Village Master Plan.
Okay.
May I like to move to defer similar to item nine or item eight? Second.
Okay, so Sharon, that was a deferral to October 12th, made by Jim, seconded by John. Any discussion on the deferral or the item itself? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the deferral, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharon, that passes unanimously. I think I need you to read the next one.
And Mayor, item ten, I will go ahead and provide the second read, but it also goes along with items eight and nine. In ordinance to amend the official City of Dunwoody zoning map to rezone multiple parcels with Dunwoody Village to create newly adopted Dunwoody Village districts as contemplated in the new Dunwoody Village District zoning regulation.
Move to defer to October 12th, similar to items eight and nine, second.
Sharon, that was moved by Jim, seconded by John to defer this item till October, until October 12th. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of deferring this item till October 12th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharon, that passes unanimously.
Item number eleven is an ordinance submitted in chapter twenty-seven of the City of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances, section twenty-seven dash ninety-seven, Dunwoody Village Overlay. That is Richard Hafka.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Council. All right, is that better?
Do you have something on in the background by any chance?
Yes, we're in the process of turning it down now.
Okay, and then we need you to speak louder once you get the echo situation under control.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
All right, as Sharon was saying, this is chapter twenty-seven, section ninety-seven, a text amendment to allow temporary signs in the Dunwoody Village.
Hey, Richard, can we speak a little louder, please?
Yes.
Okay.
As I was saying, this is a temporary signs in the Dunwoody Village, a text amendment to allow those signs. This would allow temporary signs similar to everywhere other parts of the city, but within the Dunwoody Village. And as we discussed last time, and like I just said, these are exact same regulations that are enforced throughout the city of Dunwoody. And here's the map that Councilman Hinnigan requested that's also in your packet. If every property owner in the Dunwoody Village area requested two temporary signs the first day this was approved, this is what it would look like in worst care scenario if you don't like seeing all the temporary signs. Right, and staff recommendation for this is approval. This was also approved by Planning Commission. And I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this item discussion? John? John?
Yeah, that map is very informational for me. It's an awful lot of information as far as who can receive a temporary sign. We're putting forward a permanent change to our zoning in reality to address an emergency situation. I'm just wondering if, I guess, do we always have the ability to pull that back out? But we're addressing tonight an emergency situation to allow our restaurants and our businesses to thrive. And as much as I hate looking at that sign coverage area, you know, I think our businesses need this. But I think it's difficult for me to approve. On the threshold of being here for the amount of care that we've taken to limit the amount of signage in the Dunwoody Village area, I'm disheartened, but I'm going to vote for this because I think it's needed for the thriving of our businesses. But long-term, I think we've got to relook at this again.
Well, we are in the process of rewriting the sign ordinance, which we'll see in the spring. But if you want to amend it to allow, now that you've seen the map, just one per lot.
I would be happy to do that if that's an idea. I would love to make a motion to amend, allow only one temporary sign in the Overlay District. Second.
Wait, but we don't have, can you make the amendment for the motion?
Move, go through. Move, go through.
Second, okay, so John has, Sharon, if you're not here, John has moved to approve the text amendment to allow temporary signs. And Stacy seconded it. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Now, any discussion?
Richard, I'd like to take a look at this recommendation that you have. Right now, number five says temporary signs are permitted pursuant to section twenty-sixty-seven. You're telling me that two signs are allowed for each of those businesses. How do, I want to make a motion to limit that from not two signs, but one sign. What's your recommendation? Do I change the section that we're currently in? Or do I have to go and change section twenty-sixty-seven?
So my recommendation on that would be to strike what is there now and essentially copy and paste from that section and strike the two and just put one sign as opposed to two.
So move.
Second. Are you okay with that? Okay, well, that's fine. Pam seconded it. So John made an amendment to the motion to limit it to one sign per lot, correct, John?
That's correct.
And Pam seconded it, Sharon. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Go ahead, John.
John, I fear that that's not going to allow the signage for the businesses that really need it. You know, if you look at this, you know, there's places where I don't think you're going to see all the X's that you're seeing on there. You know, I'm looking at, for instance, some of the, you know, Williamsburg offices where, you know, Myot Thomas risk is at and some others.
Richard, can you put up the sign that?
The map.
Temporary signs in Dunwoody Village map, please. Richard, can you put that up for us? There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, while the map's coming up, Jim, just to add, and the sign, the number is to, property owner, not businesses. So a place like the shops in Dunwoody with multiple businesses in it is only getting whatever the number that we cap it at is for the entire shopping center. So just the consideration. On your point, Jim.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned you're not achieving what you're wanting to achieve, which is to help these businesses that are hanging on by their fingernails a little bit. You know, I would hope that, you know, a lot, you know, some of these are, you know, I'm looking at one that I know is a law office. Well, you know, hopefully, they're not going to put two SIs's out for the duration. And I just wanted to bring up those concerns. Because I'm not sure that limiting it to one is going to, you know, is going to do what we need to do.
Could we address that by lot size or something? So that the shops at Dunwoody and the Fresh Market Shopping Center get the two. So that the shops at Dunwoody and the Fresh Market Shopping Center get the two, but if the lot is less than, I don't know.
We can do that, or we could even do by number of units if that's something you would want to look into.
Yeah.
That would be much.
That would be a good fit. I would almost look at a use too, because we want to help the retail and the restaurant, but not necessarily, no, okay, I didn't know if you even know what use like. So, because we can't edit content under constitutional law. But it would be if you said if your doctor's office, you can't have one or you can only have one. And if you're a restaurant, two or three is content. But, so number of units, would that work?
That's all wonderful for me, an overall number and going, going from zero to this is scary propositions.
Right.
Allow them forever, at least.
Well, that's right. Right. So what's your, somebody's, um, Richard, do you have a suggestion for us?
Sorry, I couldn't hear the question, I apologize.
Do you have a suggestion for us?
Mm-hmm.
For the number of units, I'm sorry.
Four or five units could get two signs, anything under that would only get one? Whatever number council thinks is appropriate.
I think that works. What's the definition of a unit?
I do not have the exact definition from me, but it would, in my interpretation of the way I would read it, would be each individual. So if you look at the public shopping center, you've got the dry cleaners, the Thai restaurant and Publix. Those would all be three separate units.
Each space, each space is a unit, right? Right. That work? All right. Richard?
Yeah, sorry, we can't hear you.
Okay, that's not good. That's really bad.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So if we were to say, uh, one sign unless the property, that's how we define it, has more than four units, four more units. Does that work? Really talking about three properties, um, four properties, four units. They get two banners.
Yeah, the odd thing about the shops at Dunwoody is they actually have very little frontage.
Right. But we, we can't be everything to everybody. Because this would fix it for Publix and it would fix it, right? Fresh Market and the.
And Reed, it would fix for them.
Right. Well, they, okay.
It would at least address some of John's concerns and some of my concerns. You had some kind of a mix of both. Nothing we do this quick is going to be perfect. Like, we've all got to recognize that.
Or does it?
Right.
And if council feels strongly that just leave it for two for everybody because not everybody's going to use it. And, you know, like your law office, your point's not going to use it two times. Overkill, worst, worst case scenario. I'm okay with it, I just want to make sure that we're very conscious of what we're doing. We can revisit this.
Um, okay, so Richard or Richard?
Yes.
In order to avoid perhaps the outcome in this map, is it feasible to do what has been suggested? Which is we allow two signs based on properties that have more than four units?
One sign.
Conceivably, yeah.
Okay. So we would need to amend the amendment? We haven't voted on anything, but we have an amendment on the floor. So I guess I'll call. So we finished the discussion on this amendment? Yeah, okay, okay. The question on the amendment, which was to allow one sign instead of two. Okay, all in favor of the amendment signify by raising your hand? Okay, so the amendment failed. Sharon, it fails one to six. Now, is there another amendment? Or we can continue discussing, we don't have to have amendment? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend item number five. Allow one sign per your, um, property, except for where they have more than four businesses on that same lot. That property would be allowed to have two signs.
Second.
So four or more or more than four?
Four or more.
Four or more. Okay, Sharon, did you get that? Oh, I need a second.
Oh, Jim, Jim seconded it.
Sharon, John?
I got it.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, Sharon, the motion, the amendment passes unanimously. Now we're on to the amended motion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharon, the motion passes unanimously, the amended motion passes unanimously.
Moving to item number 12 on the agenda. This is an ordinance amending chapter 27 of the Dunwoody Code of Ordinances, section 27 dash 576 setbacks.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a text amendment of chapter 27, section 576 setbacks. This would add a definition for street yard and a sketch depicting what a street yard would look like. The street yard shall be defined as the yard area of a building site adjacent or parallel to a street that extends from the property line that abuts the street to the edge of the principal structure. And as, as we discussed two weeks ago, you can see that the street yard would be there on the corner side and in the front, and it would be everything from that abuts the street all the way up to the edge of the principal structure. And this is a section we have modified a little bit based on council's questions and concerns. So any lot that has street frontage along the front and rear property lines and adjoining lots along both side property lines shall be allowed projections slash obstructions as provided by section 27, 576 F within the rear yard. For any detached improvement over 200 square feet in size, a fence shall be required along the rear property line. And just from site surveys and driving through areas that have these issues, we have found that most of these lots already have existing fences up to block them from roads like Chambly Dunwoody. And here's an example of Chambly Dunwoody and Redstone, where we'd essentially be allowing these property owners to utilize their backyards as backyards and not treating them as front yards. And here's a drawing that will go for that section. As you will see, the whole rear yard is shaded, indicating that it is a rear yard. And there is frontage along Front Street, and there's also a frontage along the cul-de-sac lot there. Staff does recommend approval of this, and Planning Commission also recommended approval of this. I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? John?
Richard, I have a question regarding a home that sits on, pointing directly at an angle at a corner. So a house that aren't flush with either street, it's a corner house, but it's flush, it faces directly at a corner. So the 200 feet setback for the front, is that through, from the furthest point? Or how does it go in the sense of, how does the layout happen? So a house looks directly at a corner. The 200 feet front setback, is it on either, on both? Is it from the furthest point? Because it's always a reducing line from the street going to the front of the house. How would you measure that?
I believe if I understand you correctly, it would be both. Is that correct, McCloud?
Richard, can you speak up a little bit, please? And maybe answer the question again, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, um, so Richard McCloud and I agree that it would be both.
But would it be from the furthest point?
Um, the furthest point of what exactly?
Let's say the very corner of the corner. So the very corner of where the two streets come together is the furthest point. Is the 200 feet there at that point there?
If the setback was 200 feet, it would be from that point all the way to the house. As it was shown in the drawing, so typically there's three to four feet behind the sidewalk that is right of way. So anything from that point up to any point of that house.
Sorry, Richard, we can't understand you. Would it be easier for you to run downstairs and address us?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
McCloud's on the line, but I think what Richard Hachcock was going to say was it's from the right of way location. The corner of the right will, I think is what it's. We'll hear from him and then.
Right, that's the come downstairs. Just get to the microphone and if the light should be on, it's not turned on.
All right, sorry about that. So what I was saying was, what happens is you typically have a section behind the sidewalk, two to three feet, that's considered right of way. So any point from that section all the way to the edge of the house at any point would be considered your street yard.
The setback in 200 feet would start at the right of way aspect?
Yes, sir, it would start at the right of way point.
The furthest point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I was clear in what we were. So, thank you.
Does anyone have any additional questions or comments for Richard on this item? All right, seeing none, I call the question. There was a motion, there's a motion on the floor. There's no motion, I need a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Moved by John. Second. Sharon, that was moved by John, seconded by Pam. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition by saying nay? Sharon, that passes unanimously.
Mayor, the item number 13 under business items is a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Dunwoody, calling for referendum allowing the citizens of Dunwoody, Georgia to vote on whether Dunwoody is authorized to permit and regulate Sunday sales of malt beverages, wine and distilled spirits by the drink from 11 a.m. to 12 midnight and by the package from 11 a.m. to 12 midnight. Bill Riley will present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is part of a rewrite of the state law on alcohol. And this allows you to move the time for package sales of malt beverages, wine and distilled beverages to 11 a.m. on Sunday that matches up with the 11 a.m. brunch time. You'll see in the form of the question, it also talks about the, by the drink is part of the affidavit or the referendum question, excuse me. That is because that is the form that was in the statute. There is a saving clause, however, in that statute that should this referendum fail, the brunch bill that you previously passed in 2017 would still be in effect. What you're doing today is authorizing the election superintendent to make a call for the referendum. It needs to be done this week based on the timing that it takes for notice. So we could do it on the November, uh, the November election that the DCA Board of Elections is sponsoring.
Seeing any questions or comments, concerns?
Move to approve.
Moved by Joe.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any additional discussion? We all understand that this is on the ballot, right? You're not, you ain't going to Sunday and. The grocery store. All right. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition signify by saying nay? Sharon, that passes unanimously.
Item 14 under discussion items is presentation of concept design for intersection improvements at Chambly Dunwoody Road and Womack Road, Michael Smith.
Michael, looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you, so double check your microphone device.
If he gets one to come down and have someone to run his presentation.
I think he's in, he's, he's not in the office. But Michael, if you want to, can you call in on the other number and use your phone? And, uh, Mayor, we can, I know that's the last item that we can go to, something, while he waiting for him to call in, because apparently his microphone's not working.
We want to just defer this for two weeks? You see him?
I can see him, I can see him.
I see him.
That's fine, we'll give you a second, I didn't realize y'all could see him. Yeah, Michael. I think it's probably driving, right? And ours are.
There's sometimes if they disconnect and reconnect.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Michael. You had to, just try to call in from your telephone on the dial-in number.
Exit zoom and start over.
Yeah. Take the swipe all the way.
Yeah, well, we swipe, we swipe because it's driving.
Other way, go the other way. I go the other one, keep going.
Yeah.
Another one, keep going.
There he is.
There's Michael.
You get, you get one more.
Try.
Can you hear me now? All right. Sorry about that. New laptop, I guess I had to adjust the settings. All right, so we're presenting the Shamey Dunwoody-Womack Intersection Concept Design. Get the presentation up here. This is a project that we've been working on for a little while, the, um, looking at improvements at this intersection. The, the main deficiency that we're looking at here is the, the Womack Road approach doesn't have any turn lanes, just so happened to capture here in that aerial, city's aerial. Just so happened to capture here in that aerial, city's aerial imagery. A queue of cars when they happen to take a photo of this intersection. But the lack of turn lanes causes backups a lot of times a day, mainly in the morning peak periods and the, and then the afternoon peak periods. But also when the high school gets out, it tends to back up there and people have a hard time getting through the light and one cycle of the light. This project was identified in the city's transportation plan, really from the public input phase. We got a lot of input that there needed to be improvements at this intersection. And so we, we've started looking at, at ways to improve it. The, the challenge, there'll be, one of the challenges will be widening this section of Womack. We'll probably, you can see here the hill going up to the library. We'll have to put in a retaining wall and there's some utilities that will have to be moved there. And then the other issue that we're going to try to correct with this project is looking down to the south on Shamley Dunwoody Road. There's currently a no right turn restriction based on not being, the site distance being limited to the south for a driver looking back to their left. So the concept for the intersection is, is pretty straightforward, looking at adding a left turn lane on Womack. And then also extending the left turn lane that exists on Shamley Dunwoody. It, it tends to overflow and it needs to be a little bit longer to accommodate those left turns on the Ashford Center Parkway. So we're looking at extending that back to the south. Really, we're not proposing any changes on the north side of the intersection in front of the library or on the Ashford Center Parkway side. What's shown here is, is pretty much existing. These improvements that are being proposed fit within the city's right of way. We will need some temporary easements to build, why, you know, push the slope back in front of the AT&T building there on the southeast corner. And also cutting that slope back in, in front of the library on Womack. We expect then there'll probably be a lot of utility relocation. We're widening to the library side on Womack and that's where the power poles are. And there's with this AT&T facility here on the southeast corner. And the one north of the library, there's a lot of underground duct banks with communication lines going to those facilities. And we'll try to avoid that as much as possible, but there are a lot of utilities in the area. One of the things that we, when we looked at the intersection and did, the consultant did the preliminary drainage analysis of the area. We found that the, the drainage system on Shamley Dunwoody, particularly on the west side of the road. When we, when we put the bike lanes in a few years ago, we upgraded the drainage on the east side. But the west side of the road with these proposed improvements would be inadequate. There's also that side mostly is the old granite curb. You can see here in this picture that in a lot of places it's been paved over, it's been pushed down in the ground. There really is no curb. Uh, and so in some places it doesn't really hold the water in, in Shamley Dunwoody. So the kind of a secondary recommendation as we got into this was that the drain, we need to put in new inlets and drainage pipe on the west side of Shamley Dunwoody. And that's why we're now showing the project continuing down to Noreen Circle where it could tie into existing storm drainage. And to do this, to put the, we'd put that in behind the existing curb, which would mean we'd have to tear up the existing sidewalk. And so we're proposing to replace the four foot wide sidewalk that's out there today with a five foot sidewalk. And in July with this, we hosted our first virtual public meeting for a transportation project. And the response that we got was higher than we've gotten on a lot of other transportation projects. We had a, there's a picture of the website here that we hosted and we had video on the website explaining the project along with the concept drawings. And we received over 160 comments with about, with over 120 of those being generally in support of the project. Some of the comments had requests to expand, expand the project to add right turn lanes on Womack and on Ashford Center Parkway. On the Ashford Center Parkway side, there's really, go back here. The right turn lane off of Ashford Center Parkway, there's really not a lot of right of way there. We, we wouldn't be able to fit that within the existing right of way. On the Womack side, we, we are planning to move the retaining wall back far enough so that we wouldn't have to rebuild it in the future if, if you wanted to add a turn lane there in the future. But we're not currently proposing to add it as part of this project. Other requests were to bury the utilities, which we've looked at on other projects. And it tends to be very expensive. We are proposing, there's the signals that are out there now are on span wires. See the signals hanging from the wires around the intersection. We would replace those with decorative mast arms like we have at other intersections to get rid of some of the wires at the intersection. And then some of the concerns that were expressed were doing things to improve the driveway, library access driveway. We are also currently working on a, another project from Womack Road North to Roberts Drive, looking at the entire Shamley Dunwoody corridor. We were, we were waiting for the village master plan to mostly be done before we started bringing that forward. But in the next few months, we'll bring a concept forward for the rest of Shamley Dunwoody. And so we really, this project's really focused on, on the Womack approach, the intersection. And it's not proposing any improvements on Shamley Dunwoody north of the intersection. Another concern was whether we needed to widen the pavement south on Shamley Dunwoody to extend that turn lane. There is some extra pavement out there now, but it's not wide enough to add a full turn lane. So there is about a 75 foot section that we need to widen the road about 10 feet. And as I said, that's all contained within the existing right of way. And then the final, another concern was just the traffic impacts during construction and is with all our projects. We'll have limitations on when the contractor can close lanes and, and not, not do that during peak travel periods. So that, that was a summary of the, the comments. Those have been, our responses have been posted on the website. And the project is funded for design currently. We are, with the additional drainage and sidewalk design that would have to be done down Shamley Dunwoody Road, we would come back at the next council meeting with a contract of amendment of about $30,000 to add that piece to the project. But we're presenting this tonight for council feedback before moving into more detailed design on the project. So with that, I'm look forward to any comments you have.
Thank you, Michael. Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, for the presentation. You know, I myself am sat through about three or four light cycles at intersection, waiting for people, one car that needs to make a left turn and can't cross. So this will certainly be a welcome improvement for a lot of people that travel through that area. I do have a question on the, the retaining wall that'll be built on the library property as part of this project. I'm glad that you're building it far enough back to accommodate perhaps future needs. I do have a question, is, is it possible to work into the design? I know that, I know there was some, some questions from Publix or some comments from the public about access to the library from Womack. But I don't, I don't know that it's appropriate, especially with the topography there to have access at all. And plus, just the nature of that area would probably be a danger for it to get out of. However, would it be possible to incorporate into the retaining wall, some sort of staircase so pedestrian access could get up from Womack? You know, people walking from the high school, like let's say, could walk straight up rather than have them up all the way around to the intersection. Is that something that can be done relatively easy?
Yes, I think steps could be incorporated into the wall. We, we did have a comment about vehicular access on that side. And that, that is something that's been discussed in the past. But I think that would be something that would need to happen as part of any kind of redevelopment of the library site or addition to the library site. Because it would, you know, a drive would get into the, the parking lot pretty substantially. But we can look at adding steps from, from Womack up through the retaining wall to the site.
And then my only other comment is also on the retaining wall, hopefully as part of the design scope, that will be sufficiently screened with some sort of plantings, trees or something so that we don't have a, a large concrete wall there at, at that intersection. So that would just be another part of the design process.
Okay.
Thanks.
Jim?
Two quick comments. I, you know, I, I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a, you know, it's a Dunwoody sized improvement. This is not a conversion of this intersection into a giant mega Cobb County intersection, if you will. This is just, you know, it's adding a turn lane to help us get around Dunwoody. And I'm in favor of it. Really good job on the videos that y'all did for this one. You, Michael, Ishry, I think Jennifer had a piece in this, but everybody who was involved, great job on, on that video. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
No comments, Chris, thank you, good job. Yes, it's a long time coming, thank you. Just to, and Michael and I had asked you this, but you didn't point out your presentation. There will be a crosswalk across Shamley Dunwoody and South Side.
Yes, it's not shown in my concept, but it will be, there will be signalized crossings on all four sides.
And to kind of piggyback on what Tom said about the retaining wall, planting would be nice, but I also wonder it would be a place to engage up apart. Yeah. Just throwing that out there.
You got a place right up on the top of you there that might wanna participate.
Yeah, but because we're, if we push the retaining wall back to make room for a lane in the future, if, if the city chooses to add one, that there will be a fair amount of space on that corner that could be landscaped or, you know, something like that.
Okay, that's all, thank you. Joe. Joe?
I'll give you some specific ones. Any way we can go to a six foot wide sidewalk instead of five, more pedestrian friendly? Cause it's really into that. Only village area where we're really trying to make it more pedestrian friendly.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that. I know for the project going north of here, we're looking at wider sidewalks going through the village. Going south, I, I did look at what's out there now. And if we, there's probably room to take the existing sidewalk out and just put in a five foot sidewalk back in place. If we go bigger than that, the, the utility poles are pretty close to the back of the sidewalk. So we would maybe have to move some utility poles or go around the back of them, which may result in some easements. So it'd be a little more complex, but if, if that's what, if the council wants to do six feet, we can look at that.
Could you do a swag the next time we need, just say, or what does it look like generally? Or come back and say it's either a high, medium or low effort?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's gonna be at least medium because I know, I know the poles, if you try to go in front of the poles, the poles will have to be moved with a six foot sidewalk. So then the question, we can look at whether there's room to go behind it without getting off the right of way. But then, you know, there are some residential properties that face the road there. So, you know, we'd be getting, going behind the poles. Or if we had to move the poles, you'd be getting more into the, to the front yards there.
Thanks, I got a couple more. Do we have a general project process? We know their transportation plan has to be about a million dollars. That's in the 2017 document.
Yes, we don't have a, because we're so early in the process, we don't really have an, an engineer's estimate at this point. But I think with the addition of the stormwater and the sidewalk going south, that it's, you know, you're looking at closer to a $2 million project.
And when would we know that? Would, after, when, when would we get that kind of price change idea?
Uh, we, well, once we start into the design, I mean, we, we can get an estimate probably in the next few months.
Did we already, thanks Michael, did we already, again, apologize for my, my, here on the SPOST funding? That's already been, was it, it's already been identified as a line item? For this funding from our SPOST budget?
The, the design has been funded, it was actually funded through the capital budget before SPOST. But nothing beyond the design has been funded. But the construction funding would most likely come from SPOST. And it is, the, I think the project was included in the, kind of the five year plan that Richard was outlining earlier in the, in the meeting.
And then, all right, thanks for the budget funding idea. And then just from our, things we could do in the interim as well, were there any conversations? Were there any conversations or discussions about putting in a green turn left arrow, green light, you know, green arrow to turn left on from Womack on Shamley Dunwoody? Or changing the traffic timing, lighting, or changing any of those signal devices to help that during the high traffic volumes? Have we done it in that interim?
And we've looked at adding a green arrow in the past and we, the evaluation showed that it would probably make the overall intersection operate less efficiently. Because you have to take time away from the, the cycle to, for that green arrow. And then a lot of times when you have those and you don't have a lane, that, that time, the green arrow time gets wasted because it just takes one car trying to go straight to block anybody turning left. So we, we did look at that and it, it would probably make the operate, the, the intersection worse from a congestion standpoint. Uh, and then the, we do update the light timing regularly. That, that signal as well as the other signals in Dunwoody Village are part of the, the regional traffic operations that, that GDOT and the, it's part of the overall perimeter area traffic operations that GDOT has people looking at the timing all the time. So I think, you know, we, we update it from time to time, but it's, the timing aspect of it is probably pretty close to optimal.
Thanks, last, last point here. So from a funding perspective, you've got already budgeted, your, the next steps are you to doing, paying for that further design and construction plans? That's what you're gonna be doing next?
Yes, we'll bring back a contract amendment for the designer to add the design of the piece going south towards Noreen Circle. That wasn't in the original scope.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
John.
Thank you, Michael, I like what I see on paper, but I have a couple of questions. Looking to the fact that this project's not gonna get done, get done for a few years. Right now, there's a no right turn turn on red coming off Womack, turning down to Shamley Dunwoody towards the library. Is there any way in which we can do a short fix to shave down the sightlines? Is there any way to make that traffic flow with a change, no turn on red?
Well, we can look at it, I think the limiting factor is, is that, that hill, the hillside in front of AT&T needs to be cut back some more. And I think it may, if there's any utilities that are impacted, that would maybe make that more difficult. But, yeah, we could, we could go ahead and see if, if that could be cut back enough. And if we have some money that we could put to that now to go ahead and do that.
I just think from a short, since we're not gonna have this project done for a number of years, but in our right of way, it's something we should explore. I just think from a short term, since we're not going to have this project done for a number of years, within our right of way, it's something we should explore.
Okay.
Earlier, much earlier in the meeting, we had a public comment from Mr. Essinger. Did you happen to hear his comments and questions?
Yes, I've, I've got some notes here.
Okay, so as far as the water retention wall and the use of this property and the the aspects, you have his notes and I believe he's been in contact with your office. Is there any update you can give us regarding the water retention pond or any of his questions that he raised?
Yes, I know we've been in communication with him. I need to, I'll double check, but I I don't think that any of our, the water from this project will be routed through the library pond. Uh, it will probably enter the system downstream of that, but we'll, we'll continue, we've, we have his contact information and we'll continue to communicate with him.
That's all I have. So thank you very much.
I just have a couple of questions. Johnny asked my questions about the neighbors, but I know y'all are going to work closely with the neighbors, right? Before the construction process even begins?
I, I didn't hear that last part.
I know you're going to work closely with the neighbors, much earlier than the construction starts, correct?
Yes, yes.
And then I know that, I believe the plan calls for a five foot sidewalk and a two foot grass strip. Is that correct?
Yes.
You and I have had discussions a lot in the last eight years, but would we be better off with a wider sidewalk and a smaller grass strip? So that's just something to think about.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. We like to get more of a buffer where we can, because I think, you know, four feet is a good distance where pedestrians start to be, feel comfortable being separated from traffic. But a lot of times we end up with two where we just, it would require right of way or we just don't have room, but wherever we can, we would maximize that buffer and we can take a look at the, the six foot sidewalk.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, Michael, we'll see you next time.
All right, thank you.
All right. Public comment? Ginger, can you see if anyone in the Zoom room has a public comment?
If anyone would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand in that application. I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Council comment, oh, city manager comment.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
Be a tiny bit louder, sorry.
Loud, okay, I'll try, I'll do, I'll see if I can speak louder into the mic. Okay, the, I'm just going to give my update and as y'all know, this is a bi-weekly or bi-monthly, I should say now, update. The Public Works has a lot of major projects going on, the Shambly Dunwoody at Spalding. If anybody's driven by that, that intersection, you'll see that the Atlanta Gaslight's been trenching out there and has installed about 250 feet of pipe. They're testing that in that area right now. Peeler Road sidewalk has a tree removal has been completed from the church property to the Cab Avenue. Tilly Mill sidewalk, AT&amp;T has been removing the communications lines this week and is expected to complete their work next week with AT&amp;T. And then for the project itself, the pre-bid conference is going to be, was held on the 17th of August. North Shallowford Path conducted the pre-construction conference with contractor and that began on the 17th as well. The other highlights, you know, our storm we had a couple of weeks ago, identified four stormwater issues that we addressed, one at Four Oaks Drive, Dunwoody Trace, Old Spring House Lane, Leisure Lane and Cherry Hill Lane were problems that, that we identified and made some repairs in those areas. We're also working with the Perimeter CID on two small intersection improvements on Perimeter Center West. And the projects will be presented to the PCID Board on Wednesday to the City Council. You'll have that on the September 14th meeting. Police, we continue to work hard with the VRU violations. We had, we did a crosswalk detail at Tilly Mill in Anover and that resulted in four violations and also Winter's Chapel and Winterbrook resulted in five violations. So we are getting the word out in enforcing those new, those new codes. We did have an overdose with a victim. We continue to work with our Narcon and CPR. The subject was not breathing and did not have a pulse when we got there. And then after about two minutes of CPR, the patient began to breathe on their own again. So it's good that our officers are equipped with those, with both those devices. And I appreciate the council's support on that for many years now and that helps save lives. Also, we did have officers responding to report of a large crowd of race cars and drag racers on Winter's Chapel and Peeler Road. About 50 cars there and when we arrived, they all fled and went to P Street Corners and Doraville and in those directions. The, our LPR system is working great. We had, we had a hit on a stolen vehicle and it was at Perimeter Mall and we waited and then when they came back out, we were able to apprehend the suspect who stole in the car. And then this also worked well with a mail, a mail theft from a mailbox in apartment complexes and our LPR system was able to trace the vehicle and which also led and was apprehended in Shambly by the Shambly PD through our joint efforts with them. The, we also, I think y'all heard some about this already, which is a DUI suspect hitting one of our police vehicles while it was stopped on 285 and hurt the officer and fortunately only had minor injuries, mainly bruising. We also had some more activity on 285 with a truck caught fire. It was hauling vehicles and several of the vehicles burned on that and that caused a backup, delayed over an hour on 285. Parks and Recreation Waterford demolition is about 65% complete as of last week. The, the lighting, the Musco lights at Peachtree Charter Middle School and the field we have under lease with them should be completed by Wednesday. We also have our second pre-bid meeting for the Austin School, the old Austin Elementary demolition. The Board of Education has removed everything from the building that they wanted to take out. And so the bids are due on that project on the 28th of this month. And then we're continuing to work with our flock safety cameras at Brook Run and that's been a big initiative for the council to be sure we have security cameras to protect the public and our property in these facilities. The final punch list for Brook Run will be completed this Friday. And we're, we've also been working on creating a return to events policy to use as a guide for events. Once the moratorium has been lifted for permits, because there are a lot of people who want to get out there and use the parks. Of course, it's just not safe to do so yet, but we are working on those guidelines to when that day does reemerge. We also are still disinfecting all playgrounds and bathrooms twice a day at the parks. You know a lot of what's going on with community development from what you saw tonight on the agenda, but a couple of other items that are specifically have been of interest, which the contractor finished boarding up and cutting the grass at 4898, I mean 4598 Tilly Mill Road after we received a court order to have that done. And also the septic work was finished at 2685 Peeler Road to have that, that work. And both of those, just so y'all know and the public knows, the city has done the work on those, but that property will be leaned. And so I went through the court orders that were repaid at some point in the future, but both of those are public nuisances that needed to be addressed. Our sign suite collected 27 signs and five flags with multiple banners that were illegally placed. Part of those signs were, we had about 80 email complaints from a citizen about illegal signs in the city. We've addressed about 19 of those and we're working on those as time permits with the code enforcement officers. On Glaze Drive, we did have an issue. We issued a stop work order for failure to secure a land disturbance permit. And the owner has been told to apply for a land disturbance permit or bring the vacant, for bringing vacant, dirt into a vacant lot and also some other concrete. He's out of compliance with the city's regulations. We've met with him a couple of times to try to get that into compliance. That's been a complaint by his neighbor to get that straight. Code Enforcement also did 31 re-inspections last, in the last couple of weeks. And we had 58 new submittals for building permits, 19 inspections for erosion control and 94 building inspections were completed in the past two weeks. The economic development, our picnic table project is very successful and continuing to work. All, we had 26 tables we ordered and delivered and those are going well with our local restaurant community. Public art implementation plan, the draft recommendation will be published the first week of September with a September 29th presentation to the City Council. So that's something to look forward to in the coming, next month. Also, Michael held a Development Authority Board Retreat, you know, on August 18th to discuss the strategies for 20, the rest of 2020 and also 2021. And also trying to form a consensus on updating the economic development strategy to deal with the current COVID economy. Couple of other little highlights, we had AC Hotel continues to move forward with its construction at 121 Perimeter Center West. And they held a topping off ceremony August the 14th. We also have the Hyatt Place Hotel at 1224 is planning the grand opening over Labor Day weekend. So a couple of exciting items we have for economic development. Communications, we're still working in the final stages of the census, so be sure, keep passing the word on that. We've sent emails targeting 17 faith leaders, 25 apartment managers and also we put up a tent for outreach in, in the areas that where we felt we could get the most bang for it. The, the other part of it is on Sunday, August the 30th, we'll have a census outreach at Peachtree Place North Apartments. There's a link in the document I'll send to you later tonight and you'll have a couple of links showing, they go straight to that site. And also our website redesign, which has the migration of materials to happen this Wednesday and then the launch of the new site will be in November of 2020. Finance, we've been working, they've got quite a few RFPs out right now and also some invitations to bid. Those are listed out in the document you'll receive and also the monthly financial report is part of this document with a link you can click on to go to that, that part as well. Municipal Court continues to operate, disposed of 140 cases and reset 22 cases. So that's been successfully operated during this environment. And as far as the city clerk is always busy and it's just a fun statistic to know, which is 138 open record requests that have been processed through that department as well. But I, along with the rest of the staff are available to answer any questions you have. You'll receive this document this evening and Jennifer will have it as well for the public to digest. I'm glad to answer any, any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Eric? John?
Just a quick question, Eric. When it comes to the public nuisance aspect of code enforcement and the point to where we actually put lanes on properties for us to do the work, I'd love to know what the threshold is and how often we've done that in the past because I believe there's a number of residences that are not only not being maintained, they are to the level of a public nuisance. And I can think of a few and just wondering, when do we put those, what's the threshold and how do we have staff evaluate the aspect that work might need to be done from a threshold for the public nuisance?
Sure, sure. The threshold, you know, for, it could be something as basic as if the lawn needs cleaning up and that type of thing, the grass being mowed. And what Richard does is he goes through and he solicits different companies for, to bid on that basically. And these are, those are smaller dollar items, a couple hundred bucks, 300 bucks, something of that nature. And then we had the, the one where we had to tear down a portion of a unstable carport. That was a little, a little bit more money. It was a couple thousand dollars for that, that item. But the biggest threshold has been the septic system we repaired. That was around the $8,000 mark on that one and that's a little bit, that is absolutely the upper threshold that we would try to reach. That was a huge public nuisance and it was a, it was an interesting case from the standpoint of the resident could not afford it. And working closely with, with Bill Riley and his office, we came up and the judges, we came up with a plan where we would be repaid down the road when the property sells. So the threshold usually is, I would say, under $500 for most items. But then we had these unusual cases and they were just made more complicated frankly because of COVID. Hard to get in touch with people. First, we try to exhaust every avenue possible to get in touch with a property owner. But if it's an abandoned property or a property where they refuse to do the work, and in the case of the septic system, you know, that went as far as for a couple of weeks their water was shut off. We went to the Health Department to try to bring all items to the table. But hopefully that answers your question, how someone
There's a number of abandoned properties that I'm thinking of that need work. I'm just wondering, what is the threshold and how does the city staff go about doing that? And while I have the microphone, I will also say thank you to staff in the sense of community development of department, code enforcement, and even Chief Grogan coming out to look at issues on the southeast corner of the city over there along Winter's Chapel and code enforcement. So again, thank you to your staff. It's appreciated.
Richard, did that conclude your, I mean, Eric?
And thank you for those comments and we, we do not need an executive session this evening.
Thank you.
And I have a quick comment on one that ties into one of Eric's reported items. I happen to be down on Shallowford today. Two weeks ago, we approved the North Shallowford Multipurpose Trail right there just south of the Shambly Dunwoody Shallowford Peeler Intersection. Our on-call contractor, what, I think they said he start, they had a job meeting on the 17th. That guy's already deployed materials and equipment. He is going to town. I mean, there's stormwater pipe and inlets. They are about ready to get that project underway. I can't believe it's happening so fast.
That's awesome news. I want to piggyback on your question. It's sort of a public awareness question. If you are mowing and taking care of abandoned properties in Dunwoody, there's no way the city can know that there is an issue. So as painful as it might be, you need to probably let us know, but you also have to let the grass grow. So I've had these conversations with people in my own neighborhood. It's counterintuitive. But if you mow the grass, the owner cannot be cited and the city is not even looking for those people. So just a heads up on that. And with that, I will open council comments.
I'm good tonight, thank you.
I'm good.
I just want to, the video that was shared on our officer in 285 that was sharing the news, like our, you know, chief obviously give our best wishes to Officer Mihas and we're glad to hear he's okay and thank you for being DPD and if he needs anything, I know you'll let us know. But also the picnic table project, I've talked about it. It's been so popular. And I had a friend tell me that one of her friends is now making a round of picnic tables and she wants to be able to find all of them, find it at the rest and eat at the restaurant where the picnic table is and take a family picture. So, well done.
Absolutely. Don? So on, first of all, staff, thank you. These meetings are complicated and we will eventually land upon the right mix of in-person and virtual about the time we can all be in person. Look at, on Wednesday, we passed, passed a mask mandate that mirrors the governor's executive orders. And there was some, there is some confusion and so I want to ask our citizens, as I have a lot the last five and a half months for patience as I have a lot the last five and a half months, for patience and grace. Um, every business has the right to enforce their own rules. We have no ability to tell businesses what to do. Businesses have to notify us, uh, with a sign in their door about enforcement or not, but I ask you to be patient and show some grace as we all navigate this really complicated, uh, and ongoing situation. And additionally, have the city be your last resort. If you have, you know, if you're in the business and you see something that makes you uncomfortable, please reach out to the business management first, um, and, uh, just remember that we're really, as strange as it sounds, we are still all in this together. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn by Jim. Second by Pam. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.